Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. You radiate, oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. You radiate, oh, oh, oh. You radiate, oh, oh, oh. The heat will take us higher, oh, oh, oh. You radiate, oh, oh, oh. You radiate, oh, oh, oh.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 31st. And this morning, our invocation will be by Reverend Dr. Tyree Anderson, pastor of First Baptist Church of Enslie, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by myself, Dr. Anderson. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Thank you. Shall we, shall we pray? Eternal in our wise God, on this day in which you have given us life, health, and strength, we thank you. Thank you for bringing us together again to take care of the work of this city. Praying right now that you will be with our mayor, be with our president of this city council, be with each member of the city council and their staff. For God, they have difficult decisions to make, challenging times before them, and they need your presence in order to make best for the city and the citizens. We're asking right now that you will, please, Lord, give them the wisdom they need to stop the gun violence in our communities. You will give them the wisdom they need in order to address the abject poverty that's facing so many in our community. And that, God, you will give them a spirit of cooperation, so that, God, that they will not be divided, but they'll be united in moving this city forward. We pray your richest blessings upon them. In the name of Jesus, we ask, amen.
Amen. Please salute the flag.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woodson. Council Pro Tem Alexander.
Present.
Council President Quinn, O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please be advised that the minutes from June 20th, 2023, through October 24th, 2023 are not ready. Chief Sparks, do you have communications from the mayor? Or Mayor Woodson?
How you doing, Mr. President?
Doing well.
Good morning to the entire council.
Good morning.
Good morning to the public. See, I ran everybody out of the meeting already. But I do want everybody to have a safe Halloween, particularly for our young people as they trick or treat tonight with candy and goodies. Residents gathering or having events or opening their door tonight in our 99 neighborhoods, please, everybody be safe. Also, I want to give a big shout out to all of our city employees, all of our volunteers, every single person, every group, organization, vendors, et cetera. Everybody had a hand in making the 82nd Magic City Classic a success. It takes an entire, yeah, absolutely. It takes the whole city of Birmingham Enterprise to pull off an event of this magnitude. So I want to thank the council as well for leaning in. But definitely Department of Transportation, Public Works, BPD, Fire Department, Parking Recreation, Permanence License, and so many more hardworking employees. Thank you all for that. Just a note. I sent a text to somebody that had something, had, you know, numbers. And I think, Kevin, the current number for inside the stadium was 69,000 at its height.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine thousand at its height. And there's some, there was drone footage taken outdoors, but they're still computing that number. So I don't have a number to give you, an exact number to give you outside of the stadium related to tailgating, but it is believed to be at a minimum matching inside at the height of 69. So when that number comes, we'll be sure to say that as well. But I think it's fair to say at a minimum 130,000 to 140,000 people on the entire campus of Allegiant Field, inside and outside combined. And when that hard number comes on the exterior tailgating area, I'll be sure to follow up with the council. But kudos to everybody for that, right? Definitely the biggest attendance post coronavirus and probably the best weather. We don't have to get into global warming or wearing minks when I was a child, but we'll talk about that later. Real-time Crime Center job posting. I shared it with you all last week, but it's worth repeating today. The city of Birmingham is seeking candidates for a real-time Crime Center Specialist position. Again, the name of the position is Real-Time Crime Center Specialist. Specialists are responsible for monitoring the security camera systems throughout the city to serve as a resource for law enforcement investigations. And this is a grade 17 Step 7 position, and the starting salary is $50,190. I want to, and I want to encourage those who may have interest in it or share this with you for any constituents in your district to please go to jobsquest, that's J-O-B-S-Q-U-E-S-T.org, for details and to apply. Magic City Toy Drive, it is time to talk about that. I think we are 57 days away from Christmas. Why am I even saying it out loud? The city of Birmingham, along with CBS 42 and AM First Credit Union, is hosting our Magic City Toy Drive Wednesday, that is tomorrow, November 1st, through Monday, December 4th. And so to you all, to our citizens, to the public, please consider donating new unwrapped toys and bicycles to help supplement low to moderately low-income families with their children's holiday wishes. And there are several drop-off locations. Mr. President and council, if you don't mind, I'll share them right now quickly. Drop-off locations are the following sites: Department of Youth Services, Birmingham City Hall, Birmingham Police Administration Building, North, South, East, and West Precincts, all Birmingham Fire and Rescue Stations, and all Am First Credit Unions in Birmingham City. Also, families who are in need of support for their children should register for help on Thursday, November 2nd. Again, families who are in need of support for their children should register for help Thursday, November 2nd at 9:00 a.m. at the Department of Youth Services. And for more information, you can call 205-320-0879 or go to Youth Services website at bhmufirst.org. As you know, we've had a shift in our, in our weather, and so I want to share a little bit of information about, through partnership, a warming station. As temperatures are expected to fall below freezing, the city of Birmingham, along with Jimmy Hill Mission, will open its warming station from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Again, from 6:00 p.m. tonight to 7:00 a.m., both... Chief Sparks, I want to make sure I got this correct. That starts at 6:00 p.m. tonight. And again, we're going to do the same thing Wednesday night. I wanted to make sure I get that right. That's tonight, that starts at 6:00 and closes at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow. And then it opens again tomorrow, Wednesday night at 6:00 and closes Thursday at 7:00 a.m. And Chief Sparks, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Those needing warming, those needing warm shelter can come to the Jimmy Hill Mission. That location address is 3420. Again, that's 3420 Second Avenue North, and food will be provided. Those needing transportation to the shelter can be picked up at Brother Brian Park. They can also be picked up at Faith Chapel Care Center. Another location for pickup is Lynn Park. And another location for pickup is the Boutwell Auditorium. If you did not know or were unaware, UAB Homecoming, this is Saturday. The UAB Blazers will battle the Florida Atlantic Owls this Saturday at 2:00 p.m. for their homecoming game. And I think it's important that we come out to protect the stadium and support the home team. You can purchase your tickets because they're not free, everybody. Please support, key word emphasis on support, uabsports.com. As a weekly friendly reminder, we are in the last phase of the uniform cart delivery. All single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts and multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. I want to repeat that. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts and separate from that multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. Any business needing more than two carts or any apartment multifamily dwelling needing more than four carts will no longer be serviced by the city of Birmingham. I know that that is a change for some people, but I want to say this, I think it's important to say aloud, Mr. President and council. One, I would say, is DPW has been addressing issues on a case-by-case basis for residents on difficult terrain. So I know that's an issue as it relates to the city of Birmingham being in a bowl, and terrain literally is different in some areas, east of our city, south of our city, north of our city, and west of our city. But in addition to that, Birmingham has done what we've done for a long time as to be overly kind, overly nice, meaning we have serviced people for 30, 40, 50, 60 years that we should, we should not have, but we did it anyway. We did it out of kindness. But with the new system, particularly for those who are actually, who have HOAs and they pay for private services for a whole lot of other things, there will be a change. And I know change can be difficult when folks want to be grandfathered in. We will not be able to grandfather everybody in. And so I have not said that publicly, but I wanted to share that with the council. As it relates to complaints of, how many households in the city? Over 100,000? A little over 100,000 as of last week. We only had right around 100 complaints. And so there's a team member, I'm sorry, there's a team that is assessing those complaints to make sure we address them literally on a case-by-case basis. So I do want to look you all in your eyes and share that with you because I know you may get some reach out. If you do, please forward them to our team so we can investigate that individual issue. Also, I want to share with you for more information on this, encourage residents to go to birminghamal.gov/pickup. But overall, the system, which has been a gradual change in four phases, is working. And we will continue to provide updates to you as well as the public. So thank you kindly, again, one, for embracing and voting for this change, and two, being patient with us as we make these changes because this has been a process, and it continues to be a process. One more trash update. The city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. And residents using the new carts, again, should place them in front of their homes. And if it's not in the cart, we will not pick it up because we can't pick it up because human beings are not actually getting out of their trucks or using lifts. Madam, no, madam, Mr. President and council, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I got the memo, sir.
All right. At this time, with no objection, we'll suspend the rules for, to allow for Pro Tem Alexander to give a presentation. That is, um, Mr. Alexander, well, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call to the podium author and educator Natalie Nelson Parker. And she has an initiative, and you have her book in front of you, I Love My HBCU. And she'd just like to share some information about this initiative. Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings, Council President O'Quinn, Council President Pro Tem Alexander, council members, Mayor Randall Woodfin, and the fantastic community of Birmingham. In the concrete jungle of Queens, New York, a child of Jamaican immigrants overcame the stigmas of poverty through citywide initiatives that provided resources and volunteers to increase literacy and cultural awareness. That child was me. Through those initiatives, I was afforded to be in an after-school program from kindergarten to second grade. And those early interventions prepared me to test at a higher percentile, which put me on the honest track from fourth grade all the way through high school, and ultimately to graduate from Ivy League and historically black colleges and universities of higher education. Despite the zip code I was born in or the limitation of my parents as immigrants today, I am an educator and an entrepreneur because of the village of teachers and parents and volunteers and community advocates who believed my life mattered. I Love My Future HBCU is an initiative that seeks to enhance the work of Birmingham City Schools to unlock the secret to realizing dreams through literacy while highlighting our HBCU's unique legacy and impact. By engaging students with stories during a heartwarming journey to the fictitious campus of Memory Lane, young learners embark on a voyage to discover the power of knowledge and the joy of learning. Whether it's Raquel, who I met at Southampton Elementary School, who audibly shrieked when she realized college was possible for her, or Pedro from Minor Elementary, who was the first to raise his hand from a copy of I Love My Future HBCU, even though English is his second language. I have seen firsthand in our schools the transformation, excitement, and engagement of young learners when they experience reading just a few pages. Yes, only a few pages from a book remind our students that they can do and be anything that they want in the world. And here in the state of Alabama, in the city of Birmingham, there are historically black colleges and universities ready to support and to empower them in their future endeavors. So on this, the close of October, as the cleared in Alabama HBCU Awareness Month, I am here today to affirm the work and the efforts of Birmingham City Schools to close the literacy gap and to express not only does our team have an open heart, but we have hands that are ready to work. I Love My Future HBCU has already created a lesson plan, activity sheets, as well as interactive presentations for classrooms and assemblies. And it's all available at natalynelsonparker.com/hbcu. We kindly ask for your continued partnership to reach as many children in schools as possible, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Ms. Parker, and we appreciate the work that you're doing and the service that you bring to our children in Birmingham City Schools and throughout the state of Alabama and the world, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President, to your colleague, Madam Pro Tem's presentation, I just want to say that this is really, really cool, and this is very needed, and just proud of you. Congratulations, and genuinely from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you're doing. Particularly this title, what this book means to a lot of little black and brown boys and girls who are particularly in Birmingham City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think that my mic works right now, but...
I can't hear you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Pro Tem. Definitely appreciate you for bringing this before us. I think the Education Committee has another book that we could perform. I really appreciate the information that you provide in the back. I think I counted 99 different HBCUs that people can, you know, research about, and it's a resource to just be able to learn about some other schools that you can attend. And so I appreciate you exposing this information to our young people, and we look forward to supporting you.
Thank you so much. And I would add that this is the only book for children that has been endorsed by the White House Initiative for HBCUs. So thank you for bringing it here to Birmingham.
Councilor Smithman?
Yes, so number one, can you sign my book? Because you did not sign our books.
It is signed.
It is signed where?
On the, uh, the front page. You should see the... Right on that page.
There we go.
Okay. Well, thank you. You know, sometimes they sign it right here, but... But you took some time and love to sign our book right there. I really want to thank you for that. You know, my mom just asked me yesterday, do I think I made the right decision going to Hampton? I answered, yes. She was the reason why I went to Hampton. She exposed me to other HBCUs outside the state of Alabama. I think our kids really need that. Even though our state has the most HBCUs, if you go from Texas, I mean, we live in Wrong, all the way up to the DMV, like, there are so many different HBCUs. I did, and I really want to personally thank you as well for doing this. I did a dissertation my senior year at Hampton about whether HBCUs were relevant or not because a lot of our HBCUs have been closing down. And I think we're seeing a different trend now where student athletes are going to HBCUs versus PWIs. But I think it's so important that, you know, young, black, and brown children understand it's okay to go to a historically black college, that, you know, you can have a really great education going there and that you can learn how to be yourself. I don't think I would be the woman I am today without Hampton University and how they instilled in me the black history I need, the confidence that I needed. So I thank you for this. I'm gonna hold on because I plan to have children, and hopefully I can pass this down to my firstborn. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, we'll consider the consent agenda.
Okay. The consent agenda starts on page two. With item one, to my understanding, it should be stricken, recommended by public safety, and it's just the chair made the recommendation to item one. Item three, are we removing item three from consent for a one-week delay or something of that nature, I think? For items three, four, five, and six, I think we're removing those so that we can make a one-week delay. No?
Yes, that's my understanding. Items three, four, five, and six are being requested for a one-week delay. So those will be removed from consent.
Okay. We will pick back up with the consent agenda on page three with items seven and eight as well. Page four, we have items nine, 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page five, we have items 13, 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Page six, we have items 17, 18, and 19 on consent. Please note that item 18 was recommended by Budget and Finance. That's item 18. Page seven, we have items 20, 21, and 22 on consent. Page eight, we have items 23, 24, 25, and 26 on consent. Page nine, we have items 27, 28, 29, and 30. And on item number 28, you should have a revised resolution before you for item number 28. And the synopsis is a little different. It should be a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the bid of Carville Corporation, Irving, California, for workers' compensation, third-party administrator services at a total cost not to exceed $300,000 for a term of three years commencing November 1st, 2023, through October 31st, 2026, and authorizing the mayor to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the city. This is the lowest bid submitted. And we pick back up with the consent agenda on page 10 with items 31, 32, 33, and 34. Then on page 11, we have items 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. And my understanding is that item 19 is being requested to be withdrawn.
I didn't hear anything on 19.
Mr. President, if the administration will consider the item and the request for the withdrawal is so it can be amended. One of your colleagues wants to add an additional $27,500 to it. And because it's a 772 publication, it can't move forward with the amendment without being re-advertised.
Okay. All right. Noted. At this time, do councilors have any items for consent or withdrawal from consent? Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to withdraw 27 from consent. It's on page nine.
Page nine, item... Okay.
Oh, no, actually, it's Abbott.
Counsel Moore?
After I read it a little bit. I had to think about it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Can we remove item number 20 from consent? Thank you.
That is page seven, item number 20. Counselor Tate?
Yes, Mr. President. The applicant for item number two called for item number two to be withdrawn. The application to be withdrawn.
Page two, item number two is withdrawn. Other, other items, I would like on page seven, item number 21, removed from consent. Any additional items for consent or removal from consent? All right. At this time, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so request. If so, such items will be reverted to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. That motion passes. First item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. First item should be item number three, a resolution granting an operating authority permit with four certificates of public necessity and convenience to Berks Enterprises LLC, 313 27th Avenue Northwest, Birmingham, to be used in the operation of a limousine service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended. We need to get the item before us before we can make the delay.
I move approval. Second?
Okay, item is before us. Now we can make the motion to delay.
Motion for a one-week delay.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. Seconded by Counselor Smithman.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Next item should be item four, a resolution granting an operating permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Caring Hands Medical Transportation and Carrier LLC, 1135 Springview Street, Birmingham, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical transport service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended. Do you want me to just read the other two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item five, a resolution granting operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience Item five, a resolution granting operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Compassionate Care Wheels LLC, 4211 Chase Lake Fairway, Hoover, Alabama, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical transport service for the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title XII, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended. And item six, a resolution granting an operating permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Limo Serve LLC, 1550th Street North, Birmingham, to be used in the operation of a limousine service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title XII, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended. And we need the items before us for us to make...
I move approval.
Okay, now we can make the one-week delay.
Motion for a one-week delay.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. And I think we're going to... Well, item nineteen was withdrawn, so we're going to item twenty. On page seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and the Common Thread Community in an amount not to exceed $100,000 under the Common Thread Community will provide services to the city by supporting ten to fifteen new small businesses by expanding its existing cultural center at Tittysville Project through the redevelopment, rehabilitation, enhancement of Building Two, located on the existing premises at 2222 Sixth Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, into a 15,000 square feet of additional, square feet of additional office collaborating space for a total of combined office collaborating space of 60,000 square feet, inclusive of both Buildings One and Two, with an estimated investment of approximately $525,000 by consulting for the improvements to Building Two. Motion on the item, please.
Second.
Item is before you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nick Crawford is here. He's on the board for April One and the Cultural Arts Center. If it's okay, if he just has a few minutes, just explain the plans for Building Two. And also, Building One is where April One is built up. There was a wait school before they closed it down, so that's Building One. Then across is Building Two where TuneUp is. I think a lot of you councilors are donating some of their ARPA funding towards that.
Thank you for allowing me to be here, Counselor Smitherman. Thank you for your support from the very beginning. We're really excited about the cultural center. Many of you have been out to see it. We've been working on it for almost three years now. Currently built up is operating out of there April One sports facility that really focuses on conflict resolution, step-by-step, with Coach Leonard Stevens is out of there as well. Kahala Medical will be moving in in January to open a new daycare. And we have just launched our auto mechanic shop called TuneUp that will be training technicians in that career pathway. And so Phase Two development, we're really excited about. This is what this funding is going to be used for, where we will be incubating new businesses, mainly out of the Tittysville area and surrounding communities. We will also be pursuing a gathering-type event center, which Counselor Smitherman has been advising us on. And then also, The Last Hope would be a five-to-eight section coworking kitchen that would allow new businesses to come in for a year or two to launch their storefront and then move out into the city. So, I know that was a lot of information. Thanks for listening. Any questions?
Counselor Clark?
I just want to compliment you and Counselor Smitherman on, you know, this center and how it's bringing life and just hubbing a lot of really cool stuff that's energizing the West Side and creating community economic development. So hats off to you for being creative and with all your ventures and really supporting the community.
Thank you. You're awesome. Thank you for being supportive of us. Chief Sparks.
Counselor Moore?
Okay. Also want to say, you know, thank you, Madam Pro Tem, for this as well. I've had an opportunity to... I'm sorry. Counselor Smitherman, for this as well. I know I've had an opportunity to come by with Ms. Libby Lassiter, and she's showing me all the great things that you all are doing. And so really supportive of this initiative and the work that you all are doing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming by.
And I really just want to say thank you, Nick. When I first got out of office, I really wanted to help revive, well, revitalize and bring back to life the businesses along the Sixth Avenue Street because that's what I was used to. And my great-grandfather, I think, had a barber shop there. So you're slowly seeing, you know, the, trying to really improve the Tittysville community and the Western community as well. So, and also because Leonard, even though it's bought by Navigate, we don't have a gathering space almost really on that whole West Side town. So you get the crossplex. So I'm really excited to have another gathering space for events, banquets, meetings. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Clark, I think we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, next item.
Should be item twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and Urban Impact in an amount not to exceed $50,000, under which Urban Impact will provide services to the city by supporting up to eighteen small businesses by operating, administrating, and managing the program to assist small businesses located in the City of Birmingham that are experiencing financial hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic by providing small businesses grants up to $4,100 per business with an administration fee of $7,000 for a total program amount to exceed, not to exceed, $50,000. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
Yeah, so this is a project being funded of the District Five ARPA allocation. And it's a companion, actually, to item nineteen that was withdrawn through Penny Foundation that will come back to us. But I just want, wanted to take this off of consent so that small businesses would be aware that there will be assistance available through Urban and Impact and Penny Foundation forthcoming. So... We have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We're ready for the votes.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. That item passes. Next item.
And I think that's it for the regular items. I'm sorry. Forty-seven? Twenty-seven. Oh, we pulled twenty-seven as well. Item twenty-seven on page nine, a resolution accepting the unit price bid of CP Construction LLC, 905 Twenty-Fourth Street Southwest, Birmingham, in the amount of $170,995 for the city-wide sidewalk repairs, this being the lowest responsible and responsible bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with CP Construction LLC in substantially the form contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not to exceed the appropriation. Motion, please. Item is before you.
Counselor Abbott?
Now, I wanted this pulled off because I'm so excited about it. And I'm assuming that this is the money we set aside in the budget? Or is this new money that we found?
General fund, Ms. Abbott. No new money. General fund.
And you're gonna start in District Three and then you're gonna spread out throughout the city, right?
Well, the good news to each of you, James Fowler's back here if you need additional information while this motion is on the floor related to this item twenty-seven. With the professional staff team, you know, there's a long play as it relates to grant funding, to bundle dollars, to maximize our general fund dollars, to leverage grant funding to do a massive sidewalk project citywide that exists, that's happening, that's in motion. And we hate that that is a process that's taking too long, but we will get there. So thank you for your patience on that. But separate and apart from that, under James' guidance, the professional people have, who are civil service employees, have done some deep assessments on sidewalks across the city. And they have literally identified the twenty worst, twenty worst sidewalks in the city. And out of nine of you all, that means at a minimum, one exists in each of your districts. This is one of the worst sidewalks in the city. And so what I'm gonna ask them to do is share that list with me so I can get it to you all because I haven't even seen it. And we're just gonna keep chopping at it to be able to maximize the matching funds of those grant dollars to do citywide massive. And what I can commit to you is that it will include District Three.
Yay. Thank you. I just wanted this to get out to the public because, you know, they, we get all the calls from the people who fall on the sidewalks and hurt themselves and they want to know who's gonna pay for it. And I would rather us pay for the sidewalk than pay for their face. And they probably would too because it hurts. So I'm really glad we're doing this. This is long overdue. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Counselor Moore?
I just wanted to say the same thing. I know I have resident over in Norwood right now, a young lady who's eighty years old. And right outside of her house, the sidewalks are very uneven and it is a great concern. So hopefully, that's one of the sidewalks that's the worst in my district that hasn't been identified.
Counselor Smitherman?
Of course, I want a District Six, but I know I just passed some, so I'm not gonna be selfish. But I actually hope to see this, actually President Quinn's district, just because he has downtown. I had a client, she was on a walker, and she was coming to our law office. And she was like, I really had difficulty using my walker down the sidewalk. So hopefully, we can do something in downtown just because so many people use it. I know it costs a whole bunch of money to do that, but hopefully, we can focus on downtown as well. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, the sidewalk master plan, I mean, I've heard of it, the city, I mean, I've heard of it. I think it predates me on the council, so I've never seen it. Does it give us a way to, like, look at projects objectively across the city? And is there some kind of scoring so that we can essentially go down from the worst, you know, until the money runs, you know, to fill up whatever budget we have? Is that how we're going forward? Or is it by district, the worst in each district? Or just kind of trying to understand what it gives us for decision-making? Okay.
Counselor Clark?
Enough said. Thank you.
Counselor Clark, so I believe the sidewalk master plan was completed when I was a new counselor back in probably 2018. And it's been a minute since I've looked at it. But my recollection of the sidewalk master plan is that, well, I know this is the case, that every inch of sidewalk in the city, existing sidewalk, was surveyed. And all of the issues were documented. Those have actually been entered into our GIS system and are viewable in a specific layer in our GIS system. And so, but to answer your question, it's by neighborhood. And there is a priority list by neighborhood outlined in that sidewalk master plan. So, but it's, the mayor has communicated, you know, he'll make that plan available to you. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, there was one thing that I forgot to mention is that, you know, there are people in the city who think that you have to cut down all the trees or cut their roots if you're going to fix a sidewalk. But there is methodology that's been created. You can sort of hump over the roots, you can go around the roots, as long as you stay on the city right-of-way. And of course, you might bump into some things people have built on the right-of-way that they shouldn't have. But those things are not our problem. We just need to save our trees. And you do not have to come out with your chainsaw and cut through the tree's roots, which will probably kill it anyway.
Mr. President, if you ever want to see your colleague, Ms. Valerie Abbott, square up. Try to choose the sidewalk over the tree. It may be, may be smoking the city, sir.
Counselor Moore?
So I know that, you know, when we've had an opportunity to go to DC, one of the things that I saw that was really cool is that, I want to say, and I'm not an expert, so might take Mr. Fowler to explain it. But the same material that is used on playgrounds, the cushy, kind of sturdy material, in some cities, they've actually used that as a substitute for the cement to go on the sidewalks, which is really helpful because from what I've seen, most of the time, it's put around those areas where the tree roots will, you know, destroy the cement. And so maybe that's something that we could look into as an option so that we don't have to have Counselor Abbott squaring up in the city.
Okay. At this time, I believe we have a motion and a second. We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. That brings us to the end of the items on the business agenda. This time, we'll have announcements from each counselor. Counselor Clark, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. Well, in District Eight, there are no neighborhood meetings this week. But it is Halloween, so you're invited to come celebrate All Hallows' Eve this evening at Birmingham Southern College from four to six p.m. BSC is hosting Halloween on the Hilltop, and surrounding communities are invited to campus for inflatables, candy, games, and fun. All attendees are encouraged to wear costumes. That's from four to six today. Also, in a couple of days, you can join Bare Hands Inc. in celebrating... Okay, I'm gonna try my Spanish. Dia de la Muertes numero 21
Thank you.
On Thursday, November 2nd and Friday, November 3rd, 2023, from four p.m. to 10 p.m. both days at Sfoss Furnace's National Historic Landmark. This festival offers unique ways to remember those who have gone on before us. Our annual festival here in Birmingham is one of the most intricate Day of the Dead commemorations in the Southeast. From massive art installations, music performances, beautiful costumes, to a procession with puppets, homemade altars, and food trucks, this is an event that you will not want to miss. Gates open at four p.m. and attendees will get to see performances by Premier de America Mariachi, Emilio Crixel and Border Soul, Danza Azteca, Folkloric Dance San Francisco Javier, a parade led by a procession band, and a Frida Kahlo ceremony. Tickets are $15 in advance and $20 at the gate. Also note that the volunteer lawyers, along with other partners, is hosting an expungement clinic on Friday, November 3rd at the Bessemer Civic Center East Ballroom. That's from nine a.m. to four p.m. on Friday, November 3rd. For more information and to register, you may call 205-250-5198. Also, the Ensley Business Alliance is hosting a networking workshop on November 4th in the Cottons Building located at 419th Street Ensley. The event topic is the importance of marketing. It starts at 11 a.m. and will feature Jabari Miller as the speaker. If you'd like to attend, please email ensleebham@gmail.com. And finally, we were able to celebrate yesterday in District Eight a large contribution facilitated by Congresswoman Terry Sewell, a $4 million grant to help with the extension of the Valley Creek Trail from Bessemer up to Five Points West. So we've been walking each Thursday at about, well, close to eight a.m., we meet at the Starbucks. And we were joined with Freshwater Land Trust every week to just raise awareness about the trail that's... And we were joined with Freshwater Land Trust every week to just raise awareness about the trail that's coming. So feel free to join us any Thursday, weather permitting, at eight AM. We do a one and a half mile loop around the crossplex with our partners from Freshwater and neighbors from District Eight. So all paces are welcome. Have a safe and fun Halloween. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Happy Halloween. I was very excited to participate in the trunk-or-treat with Woodland United Methodist Church this past weekend. It was definitely a lot of fun. Let me see, on November the 11th, in partnership with 46th Street Baptist Church, we'll be hosting a HAM giveaway at WC Patton Park from eight AM to 10 AM. So if you are looking forward to participating, please show up during that time. This Saturday, the Collegeville Neighborhood will host a tree planting day in cooperation with Cool Green Trees. If you'd like to volunteer, please reach out to the D4 office and we'll get you connected with them. We'll be meeting in front of the New Bethel Baptist Church, like I said, on Saturday from nine AM to 11:30 AM. And, you know, we're doing this in, you know, in honor of Veterans Day as well. So please come out and help us plant, plant some trees. Our goal is to plant 250 trees, and so really looking forward to that. Let's see. I'd also like to extend special thanks to the City Department of Planning and Engineering and Permits for hosting the Eastern Area Framework Meeting last week. It was really, you know, good seeing all the District Four residents that showed up, advocating for their communities and, you know, learning about how they could play a major role in actualizing a lot of the things in that framework plan. Lastly, I'd like to thank the Birmingham Police Department for working so hard to keep our city safe this weekend at the Magic City Classic. They worked long hours to make sure that the classic was fun and safe for everybody. And, you know, I especially enjoyed the parade. It's crazy to say it, but that was my first time actually participating in the Magic City Day Parade. And it was a lot of people that came out. I got a lot of, you know, calls and text messages from folks that were just saying like, look, this year, I don't know what it was, maybe it was because it felt like July. But a lot of people had a great time coming out and it was, you know, heavily, heavily attended. And so shout out to Birmingham, man, we did that. We got a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings taking place. Collegeville will take place on the first Monday at six PM at Greater New Antioch Baptist Church. Zion City will also, also take place on Monday at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Brownsville Heights and Maple Grove will take place at the Brownsville Heights Community Center. And that, oh, and Brummett Heights will take place this Thursday at one PM at Brownsville Heights Community Center. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody and, yeah, y'all have a happy Halloween.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is Halloween, and I just want to remind the people, at least on the South Side, to drive a little bit more carefully. We have people who run every stop sign that there is. They drive way too fast, the streets are way too narrow, and there's too many children that get driven over there. And I don't want any accidents in District Three. I don't want any anywhere, but the people just, they drive like maniacs and we need help. The next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 10th, at 3:30 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Neighborhood Association meetings, the next meeting in District Three is Glen Iris Neighborhood Meeting on the 16th, the sixth, not the 16th. And it will be at St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church. And I want to remind everyone, I know y'all hear me say this every week, but my BHAM 311 is the best app available. Someone might contest that, but it is wonderful if you have issues in your neighborhood that you'd like to get fixed. And I encourage everyone to download that app, put it in first place on your phone, and get to work, because there's lots of stuff that needs to be turned in. And we just want to invite residents of our district to continue to visit www.bhamdistrict3.com for all the things that there are not, is not time to talk about up here. But we put all the extraneous things and things people send us on there. So just go take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smithers?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next PIC committee meeting will meet next, sorry, next Tuesday, November 7th at two PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet this Mon, no, sorry, next Monday, well, sorry, Monday, November 13th at 3:30 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due next Wednesday, November 8th by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Agenda. On October 1st, there will be a Senior Fit Health Fair at Railroad Park starting at one PM. Also, we have neighborhood meetings this week. Today, we have, no, sorry, that's next week. I'm getting all my things confused, y'all. Actually, we don't have any neighborhood meetings until next Tuesday. I really enjoyed the Magic City Classic, even though I didn't ride on the fire truck. I did take a little picture. I was with the crew, it was the Carol, JT, and Hunter. So I thought that was really cool to see the council being as one in the parade. So I do think the Magic City Classic was really good. I'm really proud to know that we had about 70,000 people there. I enjoy walking the parade, I always walk with my family. Y'all, that is a long parade route to walk. I was like, you know, is it going to finish anytime soon? But, yeah, but I really enjoyed it, so I'm always happy to see that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, the Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, November 2nd at 6:30 PM at Huffman High School. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM. They're still meeting via Zoom. The Sun Valley Neighborhood Association will host a Fraud Prevention Summit on Friday, November 3rd at the East Penson Valley Recreation Center at 10:00 AM. You can call 205-254-2349 for more information. And then also tonight, the Birmingham Police Department, the East Precinct, will be hosting a event for Halloween tonight. So if you got your costume, come out and get some candy. That is tonight, East Precinct from four to six PM, that's 600 Red Lane Road. And then also in District, in the area, in District One, Rebirth Community Church will be hosting a trunk-or-treat at their church at 723rd Avenue Northwest. And that is from six PM to nine PM. So throw your costumes on, come out and have fun, and/or get engaged in the Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no neighborhood meetings this week, but a Cypico Finley Neighborhood Meeting is canceled due to renovations at their meeting location that resumed back in December. Central Park Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be held on next Monday, November 11th at six PM at the House Sanford located at 320 Avenue D, Birmingham 35214. Sherman Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held on next Monday, November 6th at six PM at the Morning Star Christian Church located at 1600 Slaton Avenue, 35214. You can also dial in by calling 952-206-4918, pass code 223418. Want to say shout out that we did have a great time at the Magic City Classic, also had a great time on the fire truck. So that was very, very fun to be able to share the light of a fire lady for a day. Also want to send a huge congratulations to all the public serving workers, Chief Moon, his team, the captains that drove us in the fire truck, Chief Thurman, and all of those who worked the streets of Birmingham to make sure that we were safe. And to all of the constituents and the participants and all of the people that came from out of town to enjoy the festivities of the Magic City Classic. And huge thank you to all of the money that the HBCUs received over the weekend. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at one PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Please submit your agenda items by Wednesday, November 8th, no later than 12:00 noon to Greg Stanley, and that's gregre.stanley@birminghamal.gov. Also, you can come out tonight to Oliver Monumental Baptist Church and enjoy Hallelujah Night with Pastor Harold Bass, food, fun, and prizes tonight from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And that's located at 3314 26th Street North. In partnership with Cypico Finley Neighborhood, join us and Cypico Finley Neighborhood for a cleanup on November 4th. And the meetup place is at Mount Hebron Baptist Church, and that's located on 24th Street North. So if you're familiar with the McDonald's on Finley Avenue, so that's where Mount Hebron Baptist Church is. Thank you, Madam. Mr. President?
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams?
Thank you. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting November the 2nd at 6:30 at their usual spot at Habitat. And special thanks to all of the city employees that helped make this Magic City Classic. I think one of the, the best in terms of, I think that we had the city packed out every single night of the week. When Convention and Visitors Bureau looked at what the economic impact was going to be for this, this year was significantly higher, I think, because of the activities that we had throughout the week leading up to the Classic. So with that, you know, I've heard 35 million, but from 21 to 35 million, pretty significant economic impact for the city of Birmingham. And obviously, all of the city employees that helped make that happen, thank you. Not that many of you had a choice, but it was great to see everybody come out from really all over the southeast and obviously the residents of Birmingham. So huge success this past week and weekend, and thanks to all the city employees that make it happen.
Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we were playing the drinking game today, word was Madam President. We'd all be a little, we'd have trouble walking away, so we'll get that straight. So, thank you, Mr. President. Here are the announcements for District Seven. Thursday, tomorrow, there's bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Jones Valley, Hillman, Hillman Park, and West Brownsville. So if you live in those neighborhoods in D7, please get your bulk trash and brush pickup ready. That's Jones Valley, Hillman, Hillman Park, and West Brownsville. We do have a neighborhood meeting this week in District Seven. The Jones Valley Neighborhood Association will be meeting in person at the Patterly Library, and that's at four PM. The Dragons, we know the Dragons have finished their football season, and they finished with a 6-4 overall record. So I really want to congratulate those Dragons, and hopefully they will be headed to regional playoff. We'll see how that unfolds. Saturday on November 4th, it is UAB Homecoming. The Blazers will face the Florida Atlantic Owls. That'll be at Protective Stadium at two PM. And then on Monday, Williston Heights Neighborhood will not meet. So we don't have a neighborhood meeting there on Monday. I would like to announce that the D7 Days of Giving will kick that off on Saturday, November 11th. We'll be starting at nine AM. I apologize if there's any discrepancy on our flyers, but we do want to start that at nine AM, and that'll be at First Baptist Church of Roosevelt City. So we'll be giving you more information as we go through that. Has already been stated, today is Halloween, and we do have some festivities that are going on in District Seven. Project Hopewell and the Southwest Alliance Association, they will present their Southwest Fall Festival and Hallelujah Night. This will be this evening at 5:30 PM at Hopewell Baptist Church Hillman Station. There'll be games, prizes, there's a costume contest, and the third annual chili cook-off. So please come and join us. That's the Southwest Fall Festival and Hallelujah Night. It'll be starting at 5:30 PM. Bring your kids out, bring yourself out, bring your best costumes, and that'll be at Hopewell Baptist Church. Well, I won't be in two places at one time, but I will also be reading this evening. I am a guest reader for the Oxmoor Valley Elementary School. Their terrific Tuesdays Reading Time with the Jaguars. I'll be reading the book, A Halloween Scare in Alabama. It is such a great book. I really enjoyed it after I had to read it two or three times. But, but I'm so excited. That will be at six PM. You can log in on Facebook on the Oxmoor Elementary School Facebook page. And so we'll be reading that, A Halloween Scare in Alabama. Thank you so much.
Thank you. From District Five, I want to say Happy Halloween. Halloween is actually my favorite holiday of the year. Not for any other reason than because it's the only widely celebrated holiday that encourages people to get out and knock on their neighbor's door. So it's a community-building holiday is what I, the way I think of it, but also a lot of fun. And as Counselor Clark and others have announced already, we also have a Day of the Dead Festival here that's being celebrated at Slos Furnace on the second and third, so Thursday and Friday, that runs from four to 10 PM. And it's really, if you haven't been there before, it's a really unique cultural event in the city of Birmingham, and something that I strongly encourage folks to go out and check out at least once. Well, Wahoma Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Thursday, November 2nd at six PM via Zoom. Please contact my office to get additional information at 254-2679. Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, November 13th at two PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Items for, can be submitted for the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birmingham.gov. The Northside Framework Plan Meeting for Evergreen, Druid Hills, Central City, Fountain Heights, and the Norwood Neighborhoods will take place Thursday, November 16th from six to seven PM at Protective Stadium in the Stadium Club. This entrance is located on the west side of Protective Stadium at the intersection of 22nd Street and 11th Avenue North. There will also be a WebEx link for anyone who is interested in joining via teleconference. Please contact my office or the City of Birmingham's Planning, Engineering, Permits Department for the link. Congratulations to Parker High School. The Thundering Herd Football Team has been ranked in the top 10 of Alabama high school football teams. So go Herd! And reminder to council members, please stick around. After the meeting, we're going to try and get our group photo, so don't run off too quick. And lastly, I want to thank our officers on duty. This morning, we have with us Morris Garner and Andrew Carrington. Thank you so much for being here.
Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you. At this time, counselors, I know that we learned earlier last week of the passing of Mr. Ladarius Hilliard. And I don't believe at that time that we ever called for a resolution of sympathy. So I would like to ask if we could offer unanimous consent for a resolution of sympathy in honor of Mr. Ladarius Hilliard.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And now the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Yes, and to that point, I know that the celebration for his life is actually going to take place on this Saturday, November 4th, at 12:00 PM at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. That's 1101 Martin Luther King Drive Southwest, 35211. So again, this Saturday, November 4th at 12:00 PM, Sixth Avenue Baptist Church, 1101 Martin Luther King Drive Southwest. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott?
I hate to say it, I forgot a few things that are important. And so on November 1st, 6th, and 9th, PEP is proposing some changes to the mixed-use zoning category. And they have a meeting on, at two o'clock, on the 1st and 6th. And on the 9th, it's at 10:00 AM. And also on the 9th is the, this would be mainly for the Glen Iris Neighborhood, the appeal to the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Ross Rehab location in the residential neighborhood. And also, the Southside Framework Plan has its last meeting on the 9th, so the 9th is going to be a very busy day. But I forgot all those things, so I apologize.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
All right.